College if he would come forward and lead us in our invocation. If you'd all please stand and then remain standing for the pledge.
Our Father, we come to you tonight with hearts that are grateful for the many blessings you have sowed. What a beautiful time of the year and a beautiful day. And we've enjoyed the sunshine, we've enjoyed the rains. We are so blessed. But in the midst of all these blessings, we come to you tonight with hearts that are heavy with the need for prayer. I think about the millions around the world and the hundreds of thousands here in our country who've lost their lives with COVID. And it just seems to be everywhere. It's here in our county, in our town, in our homes. It's in our schools and in our churches. It's all across the country. It's in the White House. It's everywhere. And we just stand in need for you to come and be with us during this time. You promised us in your word, I will not leave you comfortless. I will come to you. And this is such a time that we need you to come to us. Be with doctors and researchers and and be with with the people who are seeking cures and treatments and vaccinations. And this pandemic has closed businesses and lost jobs. It it's just a time that we just can't stand alone. And we just ask you to come and stand with us and give us guidance. And give help to those who are trying to bring the remedies that we so pray for. We also pray for those in our our school systems who are trying to operate and and make education count for young people, many who are struggling because of connectivity issues or difficulty in learning online. And what a challenge, what a challenging time. We pray for our first responders, for those in law enforcement, firefighting and EMS. Those who take time to go to people who are hurting in the midst of dangerous and troubling times. And be with them and guide them. We pray for our representatives and board and the people who were struggling so diligently to preserve quality healthcare in Randolph County. And this has been going on for quite a while and it's 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 been a just a superhuman effort to preserve something that is so important to us all. And we pray for your guidance over those deliberations. And I pray tonight for our elected officials and here especially tonight for our commissioners. Give them wisdom to do that which is best for our community always. We need your guidance like a ship on the sea at night and it takes the stars to to shine the light. Well, we're like those ships at sea and we need the light that comes from the stars above. And so, Lord, be with us, bless us, forgive us when we let you down. Thank you for never giving up on us. Guide us in this meeting tonight. That that will be done which is best for our community. This I pray in your holy name. Amen.
Y'all will come up to me.
Let's pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Y'all will stay up here. Everybody else can be seated. Uh, 4H folks. We have a proclamation that this is 4H week. And so that's the reason we had the 4H advisors and leaders here with us here tonight, of course, under the restrictions that were under. We were not able to have any 4H folks with us tonight. So we appreciate you being here and the things you do for the county, but we wish that the COVID situation was over and we could have those folks here with us tonight. But I understand they're on the watching on the internet. So we we welcome them to be a part of it as well. Hopefully they they said the pledge with you. But we do have a proclamation. I'm gonna go ahead and read it before we adopt it. That this is 4H week in Randolph County. And whereas 4H is the largest youth development organization in North Carolina and the largest in the nation with over six million participants. And whereas 4H is part of the North Carolina Cooperative Extension System of NC State University and NC A&amp;T State University. And is a program where youth learn through opportunities that provide them hands-on experience in science, engineering, and technology, healthy living, and citizenship. And whereas 4H in North Carolina claims two hundred eighty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty youth members and thirty thousand eight hundred and twenty-five volunteers. While Randolph County's 4H program reaches over fifteen thousand youth with more than four hundred and fifty volunteers. And whereas the 4H has connected youth and their communities with innovative research and resources from our nation's one hundred and six land-grant universities and colleges for more than one hundred years. And finally, whereas 4H youth across the nation are leading efforts to solve problems in their communities and make a difference in their for their futures. And now therefore be it resolved that the Randolph County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim October fourth through the tenth of ni- of twenty twenty as National 4H Week in Randolph County. The board urges people of this community to take advantage of the opportunity to become more aware of this special program that enhances our young people's interest in their futures as part of Randolph County 4H Youth Development and to join us in recognizing this unique partnership between our county and our state university system. And this is the fifth day of October twenty twenty and it'll be signed as soon as we adopt it by Chairman Friday. So I'll entertain a motion to adopt this proclamation.
I make a move, make a motion to adopt this proclamation for National 4H Week.
Is there a second?
Second.
All needing discussion? All those in favor, let it known saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And motion carries. So anything y'all would like to talk about, you can come step to the podium there and anything you, we appreciate what y'all do for our youth. I know it's been probably a challenging time. As everybody's.
It it sure has. You know, we're used to being in the schools. We have programs after school at night. Our community clubs and our programs that we do, you know, we've been unable to program face to face. But we have been relevant. We have continued to do programs. We have moved them to virtual programs. So we've had a partnership with the YMCA at their Virtual Learning Academy. We've teamed up with the Fire Department. This week is also National Fire Prevention Week. So we've made five safety videos with Captain Jason Joins from the Ashboro Fire Department. So we're sharing those videos. We did our bike safety program online. We have a partnership with Ashboro City Schools. We have a Google form that teachers can fill out and request lessons to help enrich what they're doing in their classrooms. You know, as you mentioned, we are research-based information, so we have access to tons of curriculum and resources. So we're still being relevant and providing things for our young people in our community to do. And we just appreciate the Board of Commissioners for all of their support. Thank you.
We appreciate what y'all do. Any comments from the from the board? But I know it's been challenging, but in seeing some of the programs that y'all do, a lot of the youth that you serve and and have seen them grow up through the process and become citizens in our community that are contributing back to the community. So we appreciate what y'all do.
How about for all the 4Hers watching, hopefully, have all the 4Hers watching, hopefully, for tonight and the leaders we give out.
Okay. We'll move on. We have, excuse me, a special recognition tonight. One of the things that the, if you go to the county website, you'll notice that there's an application for centenarians. We like to recognize our folks that reach the hundred-year mark. And I don't know, it's been a while since we've had one of these, but we always enjoy having those. And unfortunately, again, with the restrictions and the pandemic, we're not able to necessarily have folks here. But we do have a person who is, I think, probably with us tonight via the the internet. We'd like to recognize Hazel Wiley as a centenarian. She was born on September fourteenth nineteen nineteen. So she's actually a hundred and one. And the board would like to recognize her and honor her as a Randolph County centenarian. Along with the citizens of Randolph County and the Board of Commissioners, we offer this recognition, offer our sincere congratulations and best wishes for many more happy years in the future. I believe Ms. Wiley is at Nerps, Clapp's Nursing Facility. But Commissioner Hope Haywood is a member of Crossroads. And I believe Ms. Wiley is a member, charter member there as well. And you would like to say a few words?
Yes, I could not let this opportunity pass. When you've reached a hundred and one, you've seen a lot of life. Hazel and her late husband, Wilson, are charter members at Crossroad. I always found them to be remarkable servant leaders. No job in the church was too small for them. Whether it was cooking, cleaning, sewing costumes, sweeping, doing construction work in the community or on the church, or rocking babies. Hazel Wiley walked all three of those, rocked all three of those big strap and Haywood boys when they were little. So I have a lot of good memories of her. I also I also have to speak of, I can't think of either one of them without thinking of his service in World War II. He was a prisoner of war. And I never heard them talk about that. He had license plate and I knew that about him, but I I never heard, I never heard that talked about. I do know that toward the end of his life that he suffered from what we now call PTSD. But at the time, you know, they did not talk about that. But they were indeed members of the greatest generation. They survived the Great Depression. They fought the war. And I say they because it was not the men and women who were in the service. It was the families that were at home that fought that war. And then they returned and built the nation into the one that we have today. They were known for their resourceful, resourcefulness and their frugality. I saw that in Hazel and Wilson both. It was not a badge that they wore. It was just the way things were. It it was what they had to deal with when they were younger and it existed into the later lived years of their lives. They had a strong, remarkably strong work ethic. That was a time of sacrifice and it was a time of honor. And Hazel and Wilson exemplified that. During World War II, the people at home made do with less. They did not gripe or complain. They listened to the fireside chats and they got on board. And did what needed to be done to produce, to join the war effort and to win the war. Women went to work in factories. Rationing was a part of life. Everyone was united in the face of evil. Sheer evil is what they faced. But everyone did what they could to make the world a better place. A man named Victor Harrison wrote years ago in an article about World War II and that generation, that there were mistakes and miscalculations. But they were not blame-gamed or endlessly litigated. But were seen as tragic setbacks on the trajectory to victory. I think that generation is most appropriate to remember in today's world and the times that we faced. They faced challenge after challenge and they never, never gave up. They went on to the next battle, whatever it was. It is an honor, Hazel Wiley, to speak about you, to speak about Wilson, to recognize you. I thank you for your life of service. I thank you for the role model you have been to me. And I hope that you continue to have an impact on the lives of people in our community. Thank you.
Again, I would like to wish Ms. Wiley a happy birthday. We do have a certificate that we will get to you signed by the chairman. And again, we wish you a happy belated birthday from September fourteenth. So congratulations from our board. All right, we'll move on in our agenda. Public comment period. Any com- public comments? Okay, no public comments, therefore we'll move on in the agenda. Our consent agenda, item five. We'll consider that now. If any of the items there, would any commissioner would like to discuss those separately? We can pull those off. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to consider this consent agenda.
Well, may I ask just a question about one of them? We don't have to pull it off. I just have a question about it because I think our our citizens have asked me this before. One of the things is just adopting a resolution to approve nine tenths of Bray Boulevard to the state road system. So where do the funds come from for that? You know, I have people who say, I live in this neighborhood and I'd like for, we'd like for our road to become taken over by the state. And I just thought this was a good opportunity to just mention that and to say that to anybody who might be listening.
Hal's probably got more experience, our county manager, in that realm of the world. Hal, come to the the podium there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
The the funding for roads are either, either comes from the state if they have built the road or it comes from the developer who has built the road. Meaning that it has met all the requirements of North Carolina as a state, to be a state-maintained road. And that once the commissioners adopt this resolution, it has met the state standards for inclusion into the public road system.
So essentially, it's either up to the developer or like an HOA or something. To to bring the state, to bring the road up to state standard, then the state, once it's at that standard, the state agrees to maintain it.
Yes.
And if there is no HOA, I assume the residents?
Yes, the residents would bring it up to state standards. Once they've done that, then the state maintains it from that point on.
Okay.
All right.
I'll make the motion that we adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. McDowell makes the motion. Mr. Kidd seconds it. Any discussion? Not? All those in favor to adopt the consent agenda as presented? Let it known saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. All right, we'll move down to our new business. Juvenile Day Reporting Center update. I'll ask our Day Reporting Center Director Pam Resch to come before us and have a presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me come to give you guys an update on what we're doing here at the Juvenile Day Reporting Center. So I just have a quick presentation for you guys and I wanted to really stress the where we're going with the the center here at this time. The goal of the Juvenile Day Reporting Center has always been to help youth in the community. And what we're doing this year is we're really trying to put that emphasis on the early intervention and prevention with the children that we serve. We work with all types of children. Most of the kids come from court-involved, court-diverted, and at-risk youth that we have in our community. So at the Juvenile Day Reporting Center, we have six different evidence-based curriculum courses that we provide to the kids. The classes that we offer are Botvin Life Skills and that goes for elementary, middle, and high school students. We also have an aggression replacement training course that we teach the kids. We have a strengthening families course. And then we have a new course called Botvin Transitions that we just started doing with the kids. So in Botvin Life Skills Training, a lot of people don't understand what that entails. So just to give you a little bit of overview of it, we really focus on working on enhancing self-esteem with the kids and developing their problem-solving abilities and just different techniques on how to help them reduce their stress, their anxiety, their anger, overcoming shyness, and really just starting to kind of come into who they are as a person. With our aggression replacement training, we call it ARP, and that focuses more on controlling anger, understanding what triggers are, understanding what cues are, and how to use resources. And we give those, give them those tools in order to kind of come back, combat that stuff. In our strengthening families course, we work with families and kids, both separately and together. We teach parents some different skills on how to handle delinquent behavior, how to recognize it, how to control kids' behaviors and understand, you know, what they're going through day to day in school. We also work with the kids to understand what kind of consequences are and punishments and how their everything that they do, they have, there could be a consequence for it, whether that's good or bad. You know, we work with them together. But then we also like to pull the families back together at the end of that course and they share a meal together. And we usually provide them with some, some sort of incentive for joining the course and going through with it. Something that brings them together as a family at the end of the day, whether it's a game or it's a meal that they can cook together. So in our Botvin Transitions, this is one of the new courses that we have here this year. And it's specifically targeting towards kids that are fourteen to seventeen years old. And basically what this course does is it really helps them work on personal, personal self-management skills and teaches them how to move towards what they want to do with their life, whether they want to continue on with their education or whether they want to go to some kind of technical skill training. So we we really work on, we just had a child actually finish up with this course and it was really successful in it and that he, while going through the course, he signed up to complete his GED. And that child is now going to continue going to our program and work into one of our other programs that we have to help, get help tutoring for that GED. So this, it's, he said, he was my little person that was kind of helping me through everything and he really enjoyed it. And there were some pointers that he had given us to it. So I expect big things from this program and setting these kids up for success is really what it's all about. The last time I was here, I was asking for a position to be funded, which you guys so graciously gave me, and I really appreciate that. As I was saying, substance abuse is a huge issue, issue in this county and we're noticing more and more of that with with our children here. So since then, we have a substance abuse counselor that has accepted the position. And we have a substance abuse curriculum that we actually teach. And we have one child that's already been enrolled in that, in that course. We also, with this course, we have the parents engaging in a five-week curriculum too that is going to help them identify how to cope and support their youth through this challenging time in their life. When kids go through the substance abuse program, they're gonna learn different things about, you know, how they're targeted with marketing and how to recognize that. We're gonna teach them about consequences of using drugs and alcohol. And we're gonna teach them those resistance skills and peer pressure and how to say no. One of the other courses that has really come in handy since all of COVID nineteen has started is the Step to Success Program. So the Step to Success Program is, is a tutoring program that we offer to our youth that are in our community. And it's for kids that are ages nine to seventeen. And basically, the case managers work one-on-one with these kids in order to improve their grades and complete projects for school. And they work on reading competency and practice their tests like their GED and ACT. The Juvenile Day Reporting Center also oversees the Teen Court and Restitution Program that we have here in Randolph County. And basically, this, this program is meant to reduce incidents of misdemeanor offenses committed by middle and high school students. A lot of the times, after meeting with the schools, you know, this is a program that they really take advantage of using and they have that teen court process that we have the kids go through. Right now, due to COVID nineteen, we can't do any teen court hearings. However, we have been getting creative with state guidelines on what we can do for community service. Some of the kids that we've had through the community service have been writing letters to some of our fellow citizens out in the community as far as people who have been battling mental health, people who've been battling COVID themselves, and also some of our men and women who have served in the coun- for, in our country. So those are the courses that we have at the Juvenile Day Reporting Center. Now I just kind of want to give you a brief overview of the numbers that we've been seeing and where we are seeing them go now. So last year, for our fiscal year, we actually served fifteen kids in our psychological assessment program. So part of this is, is that we have kids that get mandated from juvenile justice where they need psychologicals done. And we have somebody that comes in that actually completes those psychologicals for us. So this next one, it's a little hard to see on your screens, but this is for the juvenile restitution program. So last year, we served thirty-three youth from July first to June thirtieth, twenty twenty. And we paid out actually one thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-five cents that was given back to the community. These are kids that come to us that have committed crimes and had needed to pay restitution to small businesses in our area, bigger businesses in the area. So that's kind of where we were last year. Currently, we have eleven kids that we have served and that is just from July first to August thirtieth. For the Teen Court Program, last year we served eighteen children. So we had eighteen kids that actually came through the teen court process. And those kids actually were ones that were able to engage in the teen court process itself. This year, so far, we've had eight kids that have come through here. The Step Center as a whole, last year, we had the, for the Step to Success Program, we had fifteen kids engage in the program. Now, last year, we had a lot of juvenile justice referrals only. However, I've been doing a lot of community research or outreach to our schools and so far we've actually have received about five to seven referrals from our schools after meeting with them. They're really taking advantage of the fact that we're able to bring kids into our building and do one-on-one with them, especially with the distant learning. So it's been really helpful and we're, we're really hoping that we're gonna get more kids due to that as well. Last year, as you can see on the bottom. Here we go. So last year, in our aggression class, we had, we had served twenty-nine kids. In the different Botvin classes, we had served eighty-five kids. In the strengthening families program, we had twenty-four kids come through. On the other side, it shows where our referrals are specifically coming from. And as you can see, the SRO officers in the school does an amazing job advocating for these services for their kids. And they're actually the, the ones that we get the most referrals for. DSS and parents and law enforcement, mental health are other areas that we get referrals from. And everybody's really coming together as a community. And it's really nice being able to see the different referrals that we're getting from other agencies. Right now, these are the numbers of where we were standing as far as at the end of August. I have to say that these numbers are up quite a bit now. Since we've been doing a lot of community outreach and doing a lot of presentations for these other areas, we've been getting a lot more referrals for the different courses that we have. So this is just a little blurb about telling you how the Juvenile Day Reporting Center has been operating since, since COVID nineteen. Like I said, we had hired two new case managers. Aaron Foley is now, has accepted the position of the Substance Abuse Case Manager. And Bailey Rebert has accepted the position for the case manager over Teen Court and Restitution. Both have been a phenomenal asset and have jumped right in and started doing a tremendous job on serving these kids that we have in our community. I'm very happy with them and how they're doing things. They're great teamwork. They're not afraid to get in and really work one-on- They're great teamwork, they're not afraid to get in and really work one-on-one with these kids. They both have experience working at, working with children in our community as they've come from Child Protection Services. So currently, the JDRC has been reaching out to community partners and providing them with an overview of courses that we offer. As of today, I've actually met with, I know it says on here, the Randolph City School Districts, all the SRO officers, city and county, and all court counselors, and some individual county schools. However, last Wednesday, I met with over 40 people to go through for the Randolph County School District, and since then, there's been about eight referrals that have been coming from that. So I think it's really just about getting that exposure out there for the program and what we actually do. A lot of people don't understand the programs, so I really have enjoyed getting together with all the community members that we have and sharing that. Where we are going, one more time. There we go. So where we are going with the Juvenile Day Reporting Center is, like I had said, we're really being proactive in our mission for prevention and intervention services with our kids here in Randolph County. I really believe that together, we all can make a difference, and I'm seeing that as just talking with some of the people that I have already, and the referrals coming through. I'm really excited about all the kids that we're going to be able to reach, so thank you for your time. Anybody have any questions?
I think we have individually met with you and talked with you. I think you've been at the, in, as a director for what's, seven months now or so. So when I originally came on the board, I was appointed to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and that's basically a, let, don't mean, thank Mr. Kidd's thunder, but made up of various members of the community, court officers, judges, school representatives, even students that are represented as well. And the whole idea behind the program is so that they don't have to go see Major Cheek over there. That's the whole reason for that program, that they are hopefully stay out of trouble and become contributing citizens of the community. And so we appreciate what you do. I really didn't have an appreciation for that group until I served on it for a couple of years, and they do make a difference in these kids' lives. And like a lot of different things, the quicker we can address those issues early in life, the less likely those folks are going to reoffend and become problems in our community. So any questions, any commissioners, any comments?
Well, I have to. Sorry, Chairman, sorry. Can, can a youth be part, or served, maybe a better word, by more than one program? Like, can they do teen court and restitution, or how does that work?
So specifically for the teen court and restitution, if a child engages in the teen court program, then if they have community service that is, you know, handed down by their, their peers, then that is part of what they would do. In conjunction of going to teen court, they also would engage in one of the courses that we have there, one of the Botvin Skills, ARP Skill, anything that their referral sources identified as a need.
All right. And then on your Step to Success Report, I noticed at the bottom that there were 17 students served in 1920, and everyone completed the program, but there's a statement there, unsuccessful termination due to noncompliance. So, and, and there were none, but I was just curious about what that looks like.
So in order to be considered unsuccessful in one of the programs that we have, the child would have to either come to the program and just not engage, they would have to refuse to come to the program, they would have to refuse to do any kind of work. We look at it, that is in terms of academic success and academic growth. So what I, my, I have a high expectation for the case managers when they're working with kids, period, but when they're going through the program for Step to Success, they're really supposed to be an advocate for those kids. So they're supposed to be getting their grades, supposed to be meeting with their teachers, their administration to see where that child is lacking and what they're needing. And then they're supposed to actually be working with the parents as well to make sure that the parents are being held accountable for making sure those kids get that work. So if we have no engagement with the parent, and we have no engagement with the child, then we would meet with the school and see what else we could do for that child, and if there was nothing else that the JDRC would be able to do, then they would be considered unsuccessful in the program.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Kidd, I'll recognize you. We do have a vacancy on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and Commissioner Kidd is our commissar representative on that council, so I'll let you.
All right. Well, the, of course, Commissioner Allen had said, did a great job explaining some kind of, that committee and some of the thoughts about, about the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council that kind of oversees budgeting and programs and everything. But we'll just use this as a segue, and I thought it was kind of interesting, and our chairman, Frye, our county manager, thought this was going to be a good opportunity. And I think, I was talking earlier, this is just kind of, I think this report is for JCPC and for Juvenile Day Reporting. It's just kind of a nice outward-facing kind of way for the community to know a little bit more about probably, I mean, like, like Commissioner Allen, I think, you know, before I had this job as county commissioner, I mean, I had no idea what Juvenile Day Reporting was, or what it did, or what kind of programs were offered. I mean, I had no idea, and I didn't know anything about a Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, and what that oversight was either. So I think this is a nice little opportunity just to kind of highlight this department that hopefully, none of us will ever see or use and see, you know, what it's doing, you know, to serve these youth in our, our community. And also, this segue is talking about the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council that oversees this. Again, this is a council or commissioner or whatever that the commissioners appoint, and it's a large, I can't remember the number of people, but we obviously have a member here, Jody Carey, she serves on there with me. And so anyway, these positions come up from time to time when they're openings, and so typically, this would be on the consent agenda, if you look at your agenda, and it would be one of those things where we just kind of rubber stamp in a, a position that, you know, one of us had recommended to the whole board, and it kind of goes through. But this one, since you're here reporting this, is kind of another outward-facing way of the process or whatever. But there's a young man that came a few months ago, and actually, at public comment, and talked about some things that were going on in our community. And I know, I think I'm not speaking out of turn for Chairman Frye, if he was here, and I can't do as good a job as he does, but he was just really impressed with this young man, and his name's Jalen Brower. We had a position come up as an alternate on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council here, and so we just approached him about that opening and see if he'd be interested. And of course, if you know Jalen, a lot of you do, you probably would guess right off the bat that he was very interested in helping young people, especially that prevention piece in the title of this council's name. And so, and he has a, if some of you heard his testimony before, you've already heard the story, and this is a public statement, so I'm sure he wouldn't mind if I read it. So I'll try to read this about Jalen. And typically, again, process-wise, we would just get all this information in this bio, and we would all look over it and kind of rubber stamp this appointment in the consent agenda, but we're just going to be a little more open about this one, so you can see how the process works. But the background, so Jalen Brower is a young man. He's the owner of Peak Performance here in Ashbury. He's an amazing young fella. I guess I could call him a young fella since the age of my son. But he was raised in Ramseur by his grandparents right down the road here, earned his way to Western Carolina University on an athletic scholarship, outstanding football player. And there, through a series of bad choices, he found himself no longer on the football team or even in school at Western Carolina. And a result, as a result of this, he realized that career opportunities were either closed to him or extremely limited. He also had immediate family members during this time that had some serious health issues, one of which resulted in the untimely death of his sister. This led him to create his own pathway to success and focus on health, wellness, strength, and endurance. And today, Peak Performance, which is run by Jalen, trains and mentors youth of all ages, as well as coaching adults to be more physically fit. Jalen believes wholeheartedly that investing your time, effort, and love into whatever you do will positively impact the lives of others. His efforts to success were recognized by the Ashbury-Randolph Chamber of Commerce as their Emergency Community Leader, and North Carolina Rural Center awarded him Entrepreneur of the Year. He's active in many youth programs throughout our community, which is how some of you may know him. He coaches and mentors youth. He's also a member of Mid-State Rotary and the Ashbury-Randolph Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. And just the key points in that of why he was so interested in JCPC in this is that piece where he realizes he made some mistakes, and he didn't blame anybody else or, you know, continued to spiral down that bad path. He made a choice to change his life and go in the right direction and try to positively impact the lives of others, especially youth. And so I know he was really excited about being considered for this appointment, so with that, I'll make a motion to appoint Jalen to the JCPC Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Thank you, Commissioner Kidd. If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor of the appointment, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and the motion carries. So we thank you for that. We thank you for your presentations. Appreciate what you're doing. I would take the opportunity now that, you know, this board does appoint a significant number of appointees to various boards, and we're always looking for folks that are interested in the community, whether it be serving on the senior adults or hospital, or, I'm sorry, that the, some of the nursing facility boards that are localized, the health department boards. You know, there are a number of numerous boards that we have that sometimes have vacancies, and if you are interested, anyone in serving the community on a board, we certainly can get you in contact with the right folks, fill out the application, and get you considered because that's a good way for folks to give back to the community, and we're always looking for good folks to serve on the various boards that we have.
There is a link on the county website to boards and commissions.
Boards and commissions, so you can see what's out there. So always looking for that. All right. We'll move on to Item C, update from Waste Management. Have Bob Peeler with Waste Management to give us an update. I believe you have Mr. Feely there in charge, and Toto there with you too. I would like to ask you to turn to that camera there and show off that ugly tie that you've got.
I knew you'd like it, Mr. Vice Chairman.
You wore that just for us.
That's my fall tie.
Looks like awful, like Clemson orange to me, so.
Thank you. Glad to be here. I am Bob Peeler. I'm Senior Manager of Government Affairs for Waste Management, and I'm joined by Mike McFeely, who is our district manager and the manager of Great Oak Landfill. We appreciate this opportunity each year, but we especially appreciate the opportunity to partner with you, the commissioners, the staff, and the citizens of Randolph County to do the best we can to manage the Great Oak Landfill. And I will assure you, we're not perfect, but we try. And when there is an issue, we take some pride in following up on it, and we look forward to continue to do that. You have the annual report before you, and I know the citizens can download it from the website, so I won't go through that line by line in detail, but I would like to, to point out a few highlights. Randolph County and Waste Management executed the original agreement to build and operate Great Oak Landfill on June 2nd, 2014. It was amended in April of 2019 to reflect an increase in daily tonnage allowance. The initial earthmoving activities began in May of 2016 and were largely completed by the end of that calendar year. The first loads of waste were accepted on January 9th of 2017. Great Oak Landfill operates on a five-and-a-half-day-per-week schedule. For the fiscal year July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2020, Great Oak received 559,029 tons of waste, and we accepted 6,970 tons of recyclables. This isn't all about the dollar figure, but I do want to point out some of the contributions that we have made to the county and look forward to continuing to make. And taxes and fees that are paid from June 2nd of 2014 through this fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, Waste Management has paid the county a little over $10 million. And from March 31st of 2017 through June 30th of 2020, Waste Management has paid taxes of a little over $3 million. We have a Citizens Advisory Committee that is very important, who gets information and shares it with us. We've had meetings during the fiscal year, but obviously, the COVID, the coronavirus has restricted our in-person meetings, and we look forward, like you do, to be able to get together face-to-face soon. We are proud of the fact that we have partnered with local businesses in our endeavors, and we have also supported, as a corporate partner, local organizations that are listed in the report. And finally, one of the things that I would like to ask you to, to look at this evening and going forward is a convenience site update. Waste Management manages and operates the county's six convenience sites at Farmer, Coal Ridge, Liberty, Trinity, Randleman, and County Land Road. The approximate expense related to labor and maintenance for those sites is a little over $185,000 annually. In addition to the management and operation at the six sites, Waste Management provides waste containers and hauling services necessary for waste disposal at the six sites. And recycling services and collection of batteries, oil filters, antifreeze, motor oil, e-waste, and tires are also being provided by Waste Management at those sites and the two recycling centers. The approximate expense to Waste Management related to these activities is a little over $850,000 annually. The estimated annual expense for those six sites at this point was about $550,000, and now it's a little over $850,000. I would like for us to get together and discuss that as we move forward, and as we continue to try to be a good partner, corporate partner with you. My son Hunter is 11 years old. He started the sixth grade this year, and I thought about it coming in to the county today. I've had the pleasure of working with you all and with the citizens of Randolph County almost all his life, and look forward to continue to do that, and I think he might be watching online this evening. So Hunter, hello, if you are. And my wife Donna is with him, and I'll assure you, Hunter's the one, he knows how to do all the online stuff, he knows I don't. But thank you for allowing us to work with you. Again, we're not perfect. We've gone through some issues. There've been a lot of water on the bridge since 2014 when we started this endeavor. But every time an issue has come up that we need to focus on, we focus on it, and we can, will continue to do that. As I mentioned, I'm with Mike McFeely. Mike McFeely and Vanessa Hemphill and our staff at Great Oak are the ones that make it work and run. It's not me. And I thank Mike and Vanessa and all our staff at Great Oak for what they do every day on behalf of the citizens of Randolph County. And at this time, Mike and I will answer any questions that you have.
I, I think the issues that we're, have been having seem to be your addressing. You know, we've had the issues over the years, and I'll say complaints, but issues that have occurred, and it seems like you've been very responsive in responding to them. The only one I can think of that I've had lately is relating to some of the tire disposals, and we've talked about that, and I know that we've had issues probably at the, at the landfill and also at the convenience sites with outside-county folks coming in and leaving waste and that kind of thing. Any updates on those, those issues?
We have, we've been working a lot closer with the convenience site attendants.
You get, yeah.
I'm sorry. We've been working, training the convenience site attendants to start, we're actually starting to check IDs as people are dumping waste, and we do, we turn around on a daily basis. We turn around waste coming out of Guilford and Alamans County. We turn around waste coming out of Guilford and Alamance County that's coming to the convenience sites. We're also looking closer at the tires that are coming in. We do have, the scrap tire expense has become a huge expense for us. And we're looking at, we are making sure that people have the correct paperwork, that they have their scrap tire hauler certifications, and that they actually do have tires that are generated within Randolph County, because we were getting a number of tires that were coming in from outside the county. So we're doing what we can to, you know, to police what's coming in.
Right, right, okay. All right, any other questions or comments for?
I got a couple of things.
Speak into your mic, make sure.
Yeah, I'll try to do that. And so people in here, of course, being from the Farmer area, you know that. Bob, I know you guys have worked hard to try to overcome some of the problems we've had there with, with some of the convenience area there. But I got to tell you, just about two weeks ago, I had a guy that I was talking to that said he had a bunch of stuff, been cleaning out of his house, and said he always used to take stuff to the, the main center to be disposed. And he said, he summarized another, couldn't, couldn't take, take his waste that day, so he went to the Farmer site. And he said, he went to the Farmer site and went in there and unloaded the stuff and started to hand the attendant some money. And so the guy said, I don't, I don't want your money. He said, why not? He said, because I'm supposed to pay for this. He said, no, it's a convenience site, you don't pay. And he was really, he was really amazed that for this service, he didn't have to pay. He said, I'm going to start going over there, because it's closer. And I said, yeah. So I think the real, the thing I want to say is, I would have thought everybody in Randolph County knew the convenience sites were there, and that is convenience, is part of the agreement with you guys. I think people need to know that you can take your waste to the convenience sites when the times are available and the dates are available, and it won't cost you any money to do it. You don't have to go to the central, central site. So I bring that up because I would have thought as, as long as that program's been running that a lot of people have known that, but apparently there are still people that think if you take it to the convenience site, you have to pay for it.
It's a free service to the citizens of Randolph County.
I just wanted to ask, there were, it says, you know, it talks about just the routine inspections that took place, you know, this past year by the NCEQ, DWM, and then the DAQ. So I assume all of those went well? We would know if there was something we needed to know?
That's correct. If there were issues, then the county would be informed of those issues.
Okay, so, good job. Thank you.
Well, I was going to ask about, I guess, the vice chairman, I started to say chairman, whatever, acting chairman, had mentioned a little bit, the abundance, and I didn't, I was looking, doing the report of that 1,694 tons of scrap tires. You know, and I don't know if it's fair to compare it to similar areas or areas near us. Is that an overabundance of scrap tires? Are we getting overwhelmed with that?
It is becoming a major expense for us. Part of the reason, of course, we take tires at every one of the convenience sites. Residents can bring scrap tires to the satellite locations, Liberty, Farmer, Coal Ridge, Liberty, Randleman. The commercial haulers can bring them to the county land site where we actually, and ultimately, we have to bring them all there. In addition to that, the, a number of the commercial tire dealers in town have trailers where they deposit scrap tires, and we pay the bill for it. So, you know, we really don't have a record of where all of these tires are coming from. I mean, in some cases, we have to assume that they're all coming from Randolph County, but it is a huge amount.
But it seems like a large amount.
Yes.
You know, we talked about it at some, but I don't know kind of where we were on that. Anyway, and then on a positive note, I just want to say, since this is annual report or whatever, I'm again this year impressed with the responsiveness and timeliness of responses. I've had people call, well, mostly Bob Peeler. People call me, I've called nights, weekends, you know, mornings, evenings, whatever, and I always get an answer and always get a response, and usually if something needs to be fixed, you know, it gets fixed. You know, in the past, I've had a lot of comments about traffic in other areas, and I know that some of that is really hard to control, and through, you know, the efforts of the Sheriff's Department, High Patrol, and, and you guys, I've actually gotten some positive comments about that lately of how some people felt like their traffic has slowed down, that with this rogue traffic that was coming in, not following that. So kudos to y'all. And then I've got a lot of great positive feedback on the new site in Randleman, and I've been by there a couple of times to see, and that's a lot different for the city of Randleman, that being there and having that manned, because that was a mess before. So thank you for your efforts there.
Thank you. We work together.
Owen, we appreciate that, because one example is Animal Services, working with you on one of the buildings out there to provide some office space. We appreciate sharing that with us, that will save the county some money, make it very convenient for those animal control officers out there. I guess the one last thing I want to mention, how we, I know we, I guess a little over a year ago increased the tonnage. How are volumes, what's an update on, on the tonnage?
We have increased by about 25% so far. We're still working on it. The coronavirus, of course, has affected some of those issues, but we're up about 25% already over the last couple of months. So we look forward to making more progress in that, too.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for these folks? All right.
Thank you for this partnership.
Thank you, we appreciate it. All right, we'll move to the next agenda item. I guess Sheriff, are you going to present, or is Justin, not Justin on the agenda, but I believe Sheriff Sebo, you're going to present your proposal here?
And first of all, I want to say how good a choice you made with Jalen Brower. He's an admirable young man, very impressionable, and accomplished so much with the hand he was dealt. So, good choice. I'm here requesting the expenditure of our law enforcement restricted funds, the amount of $56,051 to be used to purchase a tactical robot. The robot will be assigned to our emergency response team. This robot will be used for hostile, volatile, and very, I guess, suicidal barricaded subjects. We had one just a week ago, or two weeks ago, I'm sorry, over near Liberty. It's the high-risk search warrants, very hazardous situations. We've been called out several times this past year, and when we needed one, we had to call Ashborough PD. Ashborough PD would, would come, we had to wait, and by waiting, made it very unstable, made that situation a lot worse. It, the tactical robot we're looking at is equipped with two-way communications and has multiple cameras. Robot can be used for bomb detection and disposal. I feel as if the need to employ all technological advances possible to aid and assist our deputies. The robot we're looking at, and we've got two quotes there, is actually the cheapest, and it is also manufactured here in North Carolina. So that is a plus when it comes to service, training, and whatever. I've got Lieutenant Wilson here, who may be able to answer your questions in reference to the logistics of it, and we'll go from there. I know it's an expensive piece of machinery, but once you've seen them in action and what they can actually do, it's well worth it.
I guess one question I'd have is the, it's remote, it's, how durable is it? I mean, it's, if it's going into harm's way, you know, it's.
Well, it's not bulletproof, so.
I understand that.
As unfortunate as it is, it's not bulletproof. However, it is made by some durable steel, so falling off of stairs or something like that, it's going to be able to withstand that. Now, it has, this particular model that we're looking at has an articulate arm that's attached to it, so that you can do doorknobs. Obviously, you know, getting a robot that's only capable of moving on the floor would defeat the purposes of us, you know, searching a house or something like that. So this particular robot, it is a, I mean, it's an expensive robot, so it's made of good, good quality material. It's, you know, according, of course, these are the guys that are making them, but they don't have a whole lot of repeat people coming back to get these things fixed. You know, if it takes a shot or something like that, then, you know, obviously, we'd have to reevaluate that, but it's, it's not bulletproof, so I won't tell you that, but it is made of steel, and it's heavy duty. When you pick it up, I mean, it's a, it's a large item. You could, you know, potentially, you could throw it through a window if you had to and still move it after that. It is, it's heavy, though.
Any questions?
Well, I, you know, again, it's used to, I assume, penetrate buildings, houses or whatever.
No, what, what it is, is, is a, a small vehicle, conveyance on tracks, that has a camera, a multi-camera system, and it has a two-way communications. So what is, it goes to the suspect, to the house. It can communicate with a barricaded subject. We, we have communicated with several, maybe wanting a cigarette, wanting to contact someone, their pastor, and it gives us a little bit more time to deal with that person. It's, it's a great tool. I didn't realize how great it was until Ashborough Police Office brought theirs up at a situation in Level Cross. We had one there, and I participated in the Liberty incident, and it's a great tool. We would, we would still be out at Liberty, I think, if, if we didn't, if we did not have that tool, or it'd be in a worse situation. But it just, it goes along the ground, it goes up, it can climb steps, it can open a door. It's got an arm that goes up, and you've got an operator that works a joystick, and, and he's trained to do that, to open it.
And it's built in North Carolina?
Yes, sir, it's Fuquay Varina, and I believe Johnston County, Wake County, and that area.
Yeah, I didn't pick up on the North Carolina part till you said that. I didn't, I looked at all that the other day. I, I went and looked, I just pulled up the company's website and looked at some of the videos of all the different stuff, and so we're getting one with a, you can open a door or turn a doorknob, do that. I mean, and they were, I mean, they were pretty rugged. I mean, they were throwing the thing around, and I saw one of them throw it in a dumpster and went in there and looked around. So it was pretty durable. And that's what, while I was with Hal, we just looked it up and, you know, watched some videos on it. So, and I don't know which model you're getting, but it sounds like you've got a lot of versatility. So, pretty interesting.
That particular one's got other tools, other than just articulating the, like, wrist, where you could turn doorknobs. It's got where you can immobilize a vehicle, where you could drive it up and poke a hole in a tire, so that you, and all this can be done from inside the bear cap, so no one's out in harm's way, which is, you know, just making everything safer for everybody involved.
I see it's also, you can use it for bomb detection, so I guess if it were a situation that might be, you know, methamphetamine or something, situation which you wouldn't want to put a human in, great situ, not just in negotiating with a suspect or something or hostage situation, but you could use it where you're not sure what you're going to find.
So just to kind of put things in perspective, it's another set of eyes that we don't have to worry about losing a life with.
Right.
So if it means driving it up into a building that we suspect is a, you know, a meth lab or something like that, it's going to put us in there, and it's, it's, you can drive it around, it's going to record the video. It's great surveillance and intel without actually having to put a body in a house like that. And it's, you know, obviously, anytime you can take, you know, that out of the, you know, formula, it's going to be a better outcome.
I, I will make comment that this is going to be, you know, the proposal is out of law enforcement, the restricted funds there, so this is not an appropriation or anything, a budget appropriation is out of the, well, I guess, lack for better term, drug monies.
Yes, sir.
Reimbursement monies. So that's how it would be funded. Any other comments?
I just want to ask, I, I, I think it sounds great. So, so this, this, this question has, is not about this, because I think it sounds like it's a good use of money, and I think it'll be very, you know, unfortunately, I think it'll be very helpful, so. But my, my question is, at one point in time, Justin made the comment that there were plans to spend some of the monies for body cams. Where are we with those?
We.
Do our, do our, do most of our people have them, or?
Yes, we're communicating now with a manufacturer, and they're supposed to meet with us sometime this week or next week. And what we have done is, we've used the body cams at the detention center and put them out on patrol. So that's kind of a help me until we do actually get them, but we have got a very good price on, good tool. We just got to meet with the representative, go over some things, and then we'll bring it before you.
Okay, good. I mean, I just know with the, the current climate across the country, I feel like that would be probably an extra measure of protection for our, for our people. Thank the good Lord, we haven't needed that, but at the same time, that doesn't mean we won't.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just wondered where we were with that. So thank you.
All right, any other questions? Well, if not, what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I'll make, I'll make a motion, we approve the use of law enforcement restricted funds to purchase a tactical robot amount of $56,051. Is that number right? Is that, that?
Yes.
Right, okay, all right. Yeah, that's the motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, the motion by Commissioner Kidd, second by Commissioner Dowd, that we adopt the proposal for spending $56,051 of restricted funds from the sheriff's office. Any further discussion? If not, we'll vote all those in favor of the motion to say aye. All who opposed, motion carries.
So when are you going to demo this thing for us?
You need to send it over to Commissioner Kidd's house, open his doors.
We will, we will, we will hold a demo day where you guys can come down and check it out.
That'd be pretty neat, videos.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Does Charlie get to come and chase it?
Oh, my goodness.
All right. Next, next item is purchase of two 2020 ambulances. I think Bradley Beck is going to present for us in absence of Donovan. Bradley, I'm not sure what your rank is, I was going to make you a major general, but.
Yeah, I'm not the chief.
Since Donovan's not here, we'll make you whatever you want.
I drive a Chelsea, no, so. No, I'm the EMS major, the major over EMS operations. Thank you guys for seeing me tonight and taking the time to hear out of me. I know sometimes it's not, it's not the easiest to have to listen to my voice. I appreciate y'all taking the time out of your day. So our, our request tonight is pursuant to General Statute 143-129, now authorizes county's participation in a competitive group purchasing program. So as of that, tonight, we're going to request your approval to purchase two 2020 Type 1 Ford F450 four-drive trauma hawk ambulances through the Houston Galveston Area Council's Competitive Bidding Program. And it is a formally organized program like the contract program through the state of North Carolina. The HCAC has competitively bid this type of ambulance for, as required for the lowest available pricing, including any associated equipment that comes along with it. Other than the chassis year, these ambulances are going to be identical to those that we purchased last year. purchased last year. So I'm requesting that the board approve the purchase of two twenty-twenty Ford F-four-fifty four-drive trauma hawk type-one ambulances from Northwestern Emergency Vehicles Incorporated of West Jefferson, North Carolina. The total amounts can be four hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars under the HGAC contract. It's two hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars per ambulance. The funds are allocated in our current budget, and Northwestern is an authorized dealer through the HGAC. So like I, like I started off, I kind of done it backwards. I said, thank you, guys, for your time. And start with, I'm supposed to say at the end. So again, thank you, guys, for your time and all your consideration for, for having me here in front of you tonight.
We appreciate that. And again, I think this is part of the motion budget amendment we had last month to establish, along with some of this other departments, some capital purchases for these two ambulances. I think it was five hundred thousand dollars. So that was, done an addendum to the original budget. We had to wait a little while to see how things were going, so.
Yeah, I think the budget had to wait, be, we had to wait to get this approved in our budget because of the, the unknown status of the pandemic coming on at that point in time.
I think, is this same, same folks we've dealt with before, I believe you said, so?
Through Northwestern?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. It's the same company, I think we've bought for three or four years through them now. We have a very good, very good rapport with it.
Good.
All right.
It's a North Carolina company.
Yeah, up in the western part of the state, I believe, aren't they?
It is Ash County. Ash County, yeah. We can always, always get cheese when we go up there.
All right. Any, any other questions or, or comments? What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the two trauma hawk type-one ambulances from Northwestern Emergency Vehicles Incorporated of West Jefferson, North Carolina, for the total amount four hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars under the HGAC contract.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Second vote, Commissioner McDowell. Any further discussion? If not, we'll vote all those in favor of the motion, let it be known saying aye. All who oppose, and motion carries.
Thank you, guys, so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you for what you did. Tell Donovan that, you know, we didn't give you our time, but to get him a little harder.
I'm going to tell him that since you were acting chairman the night, I was acting chief.
Well, act like we know what we're doing, anyway.
Thank you, guys.
All right. We'll move on to item F, consider project budget for Ashboro High School with Will Massing. I will like to recognize we've got several folks from Ashboro City Schools, Dr. Woody, Finance Director Spivey, Smith Senate there, and Chairman Edgy Kid of the City School Board.
As you recall, last month, Dr. Woody made the request to the county to finance the renovation of Ashboro High School. It's an aged building. In that, weeks after that, the chair and the vice chair met with the architects and Dr. Woody and his staff to talk about some of the things that needed to happen. There's a lot of work on the main building, cafeteria and the kitchen, auxiliary gymnasium, the main gymnasium, auditorium, and some other things. Smith Senate has a projected budget that you see before you. This is estimated at this time. It also includes the mobile classrooms that are necessary to keep the kids away from the construction area. Taking those construction costs and putting that into a project budget, you've got issuance costs for the, the debt as well. So you have a total project budget, you see there is twenty-eight point six, and the, how we plan to pay for that. So this would be the initial budget. As things develop, this will allow the architectural work to continue to be done, the mobile classrooms to be ordered, some other things to keep the process moving along. And then, once the bids come in, which would, they would anticipate coming in in February, we would go to LGC to finance the whole project in March. So these numbers are projections, and hopefully, you know, they'll be, no worse than that, but hopefully, a little bit better maybe by that time.
The, the one thing I know that we talked about was, and something we haven't really experienced lately, is we're used to seeing escalation. I know there's some escalation costs in this budget, but based on our discussions with Smith Senate, the folks from Ashboro City, that may give us a little cushion in there, hopefully, we'll see. But it is renovation work. Don't know exactly what you may find once you get in there. So I'm hoping we can find some cost savings in there, but again, you just, just don't know. But we talked through several scenarios. And the biggest thing is, is the modular classrooms, having those set up and, and kind of having those available at the right time, and for, I believe, eighteen months that they would be in place. So hate, hate to have to do that, because that's not, you're spending money that's not going into.
Bricks and mortar.
Bricks and mortar and physical assets, but there, there's really no, no way around that. So that's part of the cost that, that got it up to the twenty-eight million dollar level. So, but again, those, those costs will be bid out next two, three months, and hopefully we can, we can get some good, good numbers back going forward. So any, any other comments or questions? Again, this is just for the budget amendment, and, and we'll go back to the, I guess, for the debt issue once, later on, first part of next year. So, all right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, if it's okay with you, since Ashboro City Schools is in my district.
Well, and you have a vested interest potentially.
Yeah, I'm good friends with Dr. Woody, you're right. I would love to make a motion to approve this budget amendment for Ashboro City Schools' capital project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Haywood. Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, let it be known saying aye. All who oppose, and motion carries. Thank you, Will. Oh, that's interesting. It just slipped up on me. Item G is consider the resolution adopting the twenty-two, twenty-one Board of Commissioners schedule, meeting schedule. I don't think that it is very much different from what we've done in the past. I guess essentially, the, the first Mondays of each month, typically when we meet, with the exception of typically in September, usually that is the first Tuesday because of Labor Day holiday. And then it varies with July sixth, or the fourth of July. This year, the fourth, I believe, is on Sunday, so we would meet on, the holiday, I guess, would be July the fifth. So we would meet on a Tuesday, July sixth, in July. So any issues with the meeting schedule?
I'll have to check my calendar and see.
All right. Well, we'll assume that your calendar will be open. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting schedule? Okay, motion by Commissioner McDowell. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let it be known saying aye. All who oppose, and motion carries. All right. Moving on to item H.
We forgot to recognize the vice chairman of the Ashboro City School Board, Philip.
Oh! You got the wrong, you're in the wrong, you need to be back there.
He's here for the school.
You're in the wrong role this time. I'm sorry.
You got to change shirts.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I got to think, well, why is Chief sitting here waiting? I understand now. Thank you. I'm sorry, I overlooked you. That was not intentional at all. But thank you for correcting me.
Sorry, my bad.
Commissioner Kidd. Moving on, item H, set annual joint meeting with the Randolph County School Board of Education for January eleventh at four-thirty. This is typically, when we meet with that board, it's, I believe, will be Dr. Ganey, the superintendent, his favorite day of the year, if I recall correctly. So anyone have any issues with that? I think that's typically when we met with them, and I'm assuming we'll do the same thing with Ashboro City later on. Usually, it's in February, I think.
Yes, I'll check my calendar.
Okay. Any, any discussion, or, well, if anyone would like to make a motion to?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been motioned, seconded, that we have a joint meeting with the Randolph County School Board on January eleventh at four-thirty. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known saying aye. All who oppose, and motion carries. Hal, you have any?
I don't, Mr. Chairman, I remind you, October twenty, joint meeting.
We, we do have October twentieth at six o'clock at the Ashboro City Public Works Building up the street here. We'll have a meeting regarding development issue. So mark your calendar, actually, two of them, okay. That'll be October the twentieth. Any other, any other thing, anything else, Hal?
I have something, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay.
It seems that you must be the odd man out, because everybody else on this board have identical initials. You?
D-F, Darrell Frye.
You don't look like Darrell.
Oh, no, no, but I mean, Darrell doesn't have those initials, so.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying tonight.
All right, I think we.
You're the odd man out.
All right. Any, any, any real commission? I, I will say, we've had, we meet typically every Monday morning with the, I guess, it's the crisis management team with the, primarily with the Health Department to get updates on the COVID-nineteen, county response and updates of what's going on in the county, how the departments are holding up, and the accounts and, and things of that nature, and what we're doing with the businesses to try to encourage folks to work with us in, with the spread of this disease. And we've seen a spike. We've been doing pretty good the last couple of weeks, but there seems to be a spike. And I've encouraged folks out there, and for the, for the record, speaking personally, that this is not going to go away, and we need to continue to be vigilant. It's easy to kind of lay our guard down and let it relax, but we're seeing some spikes, and that's not where we want to be. So we need to continue to, to do the things that we know work, is to do the masks and the other social distancing, and, and just be careful, more than anything else. I know we all want to get back to, to meeting, but with the holidays coming up, I know there's concern about folks gathering together inside. We just need to be cognizant of our surroundings, because certainly, we, we don't want anyone to, to have to go through. It's a disease that some people, it does not affect others, it is a drastic impact on their lives. So just like to put that in the record, that we are looking to try to do what we can to work with this, through this pandemic, and we've been, had some successes, but it's not over, and I guess that's what I'm trying to, to relate it. We need to still remain vigilant going forward. Any other?
One, one other thing, following up on what you're saying. The folks out there can go online to the site, Hal, that slips in my mind at the moment, but they can go on site to see the updated amount.
It's a DH, there's a DHHS website, and the Health Department puts out, or Public Health puts out information on a weekly basis now. And they are doing some testing. I think there's a testing tomorrow morning from seven to nine, I believe, at the Health Department, and also Flu Clinic as well. So there's plenty of opportunities to be tested, and we want to make sure if you are not feeling well, have been exposed, and also with the contract, contact tracers, that if you are having an issue with the virus, that you're honest with those folks. That can save folks a lot of time and energy to, to work with those folks if you are contacted by them. So any other comments or?
Well, there's a follow-up on that comment there. I was looking at that site and saw those spikes on those days, and they were fairly significant.
Seventy-three Thursday and Friday, and they've been averaging probably in the low teens.
Yeah.
So not sure exactly why those spikes are. There, there's not any pattern. You know, a lot of times, it might be a congregate living facility or at the detention center, but the, you know, those folks have done a good job, and, and we've done some expenditures there to try to get equipment to help and do the testing and identify folks that may be susceptible. But, yep, I mean, we're doing what we can, but again, it's not going to go away.
I appreciate you making that remark. It was, it was a rather significant jump.
Yeah.
It's like, and I, I don't think the Health Department really.
They didn't, I'm not sure exactly why that spiked, and may become evident later on, but right now. And, and we may have those spikes going further, and it may be simply a flu test went through and just happened to hit those, those two days. But I think we had another thirty-eight or so over the, over the weekend as a midday today, so.
Vice Chairman, we also have early voting from October fifteenth to the thirty-first.
Thank you. Early voting, early voting, October fifteenth. Have several different voting sites, Board of Elections, this board anxious to go up there and see how that works out. That's something that we have invested some money in up at North Gate over the past several years, and I think this will be the first general election that they have gone through in the new location, so we'll see how that, that facility works out.
Along with North Gate, it's the Randolph Community Services Building, the Randallman Civic Center, which is a new location, and Franklinville United Methodist Church.
Right. So that's, covers a good, good bit of the county. It'd be nice if we had one a little further south, but that's up to the Board of Elections on there. So anything else? Thank you for reminding us of that. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned. Thank you for joining us.
Is this mic still hot?
Yeah, go ahead and talk.
I thought those things.